Good evening. I'd like to call the April 12, 2022 meeting to Dare County Board of Education to order. We're meeting at Mania Middle School and the time is currently 5:03. Before we begin, I would like to request a moment's silence. Next, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Woody for providing the welcome and leader of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Chairman. Welcome, everybody. It's great to see the smiling faces of all the students and so forth here today. I would like to welcome everybody that's also online. There's one thing that I'm pretty excited about, and I hope I'm not busting any bubble or anything, but Dare County Schools is going to have an early college. I know we've talked about it and so forth, and I'm pretty excited. For those that don't know what an early college is, it gives these students here the opportunity to graduate with an associate's degree. But my view is we don't want to stop there. I mean, we want to be able to provide students that aren't going into a college or going into the workplace with certifications and so forth. So I'm pretty excited about what Dr. Farley is doing with this program, and more details are coming. But with that, let's stand for the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. Our first order of business this evening is to approve the agenda. Before we continue, I would like to request a motion to amend the agenda to revise the personnel list under Agenda Item 9A. And that is consist of recognition, instructional highlights, public comments, announcements, approval of the consent agenda, reports and items for information, unfinished business, new business, and comments from the Board of Education. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I move we amend the amended agenda.
So we have a motion from Margaret to amend the agenda.
I'll second.
Second from Woody. Any other discussion?
I didn't say that right.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, it'd be five and a half.
So... Next, we need to approve the amended agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Chairman, I approve, or I move to approve the amended agenda.
We have the motion on the floor from Woody.
Second.
Second by Jay Talbert. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Six and a half.
Next on the agenda tonight is recognition. Mr. Keith Parker?
Thank you, Chairman Twitty. We're very excited tonight to have Principal Tammy Harper and Assistant Principal Grady Edwards to share some amazing recognitions for students and staff here at Mania Middle School. And then following the recognitions, we're also excited to have Principal Harper share some instructional highlights and some of the really cool and innovative things that are going on here at our middle school. So we're looking forward to that. So I'm going to ask Tammy to come up and share some of these amazing young people and staff with us. So thank y'all for preparing it.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening, Chairman Twitty, Madam Bothwell, members of the board, Superintendent Farley, parents and stakeholders. Welcome everyone to Mania Middle School. Let me start by thanking our students, parents and staff for being so resilient during the course of the past couple of years. I know we are all happy to get back to a sense of normalcy. I'm very excited to have the board here this evening to celebrate our staff and students because this is the first time that we've been able to do that since I became a principal at Mania Middle. So thank you. It's a privilege to have you here. We will now start with the student recognitions. Please join me when your name is called. We will be recognizing first Ms. Mansfield students, and we want to recognize Ms. Cindy Mansfield for all the wonderful work she does with the arts students and provides opportunities to showcase what their talents are. So thank you, Ms. Mansfield. Our first student recognitions are the winners of the North Carolina Career Development Association Art and Poetry Contest. Ms. Anna Manor, she was art C2, middle division, first place, but she's unfortunately not able to be here tonight. Ms. Madeline O'Neil, art 2, C2, she is a second place winner. And you can just stay up here with us. And Ms. Jasmine Cooper, she won third place poetry. Good job, ladies. Next, bear with me. We do have a lot of talented kids here at this school. So this is an extensive list, and we're super proud of these guys. They're so creative. We're going to recognize the 2022 Arts Festival winners. First, and Natalia Walkslow, if you're here, because it's going to take a minute. She's first place beadwork, Roanoke Island Women's Club, first place beadwork district arts festival, first place beadwork state arts festival, first place jewelry Roanoke Island Women's Club, first place jewelry district arts festival, first place jewelry state arts festival, and first place wood Roanoke Island Women's Club, first place wood district arts festival, and third place wood state arts festival. Thank you. I'll throw commercial in. These are, she made these earrings. I think they were actually in the art contest, but they're beautiful. I'm like, I have to have those. So she's very talented, her mother as well. Adely Grimsley, first place ceramics, Roanoke Island Women's Club, and first place ceramics districts art festival, first place ceramic state art festival, as well as first place graphic pencil Roanoke Island Women's Club, and second place graphite pencil district arts festival. Good job, Adely. Okay. Connor Pierce, first place acrylic painting, Roanoke Island Women's Club, first place acrylic painting district arts festival, and first place acrylic painting state arts festival. Good job, Connor. Ms. Haley Coleman, first place die craft, Roanoke Island Women's Club, first place die craft district arts festival, first place die craft state arts festival, first place metal craft Roanoke Islands Women's Club, and second place metal craft district arts festival. So good job, Haley. Grace Godwin, first place decorative painting Roanoke Islands Women's Club, first place decorative painting district arts festival, and second place decorative painting state arts festival. Good job, Grace. And little brother, good job. Ms. Miracle Simpson, first place watercolor Roanoke Island Women's Club, first place watercolor district arts festival, and third place watercolor state arts festival. Good job, Miracle. Thank you, Leah. Daisy Brewster, first place colored pencil Roanoke Island Women's Club, first place colored pencil district arts festival, and honorable mention colored pencil state arts festival. Good job, Daisy. Thank you, ladies. Good job. And Connor. Good job. Thank you. Next, we would like to recognize two student winners who had an all district band. First, we have Ms. Kayla Austin. Kayla won 12th place clarinet in all district concert band. Congratulations, Kayla. And Ms. Elizabeth Rittenberry, she was sixth place flute in all district symphonic band. Good job, Elizabeth. Good job, ladies. Next is Ms. Josie Tripp. She's at a track meet this evening, so she couldn't be here. We wish her luck. Mania Middle School had their first science fair this year. We had Ms. Melissa Jones in eighth grade, and she organized that. And Ms. Tripp did a project on hydroponics, and it was very, very well done. And we had judges from the CSI building. And she went on to state level, to the North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair after doing a, going on a board from ECU. And she went to present her project, and she competed against all first and second place winners from across the state, and she was very impressive. And they had comments about how impressive her hydroponics program was. So we want to recognize her for that. Good job, Josie. At the start of the school year, Ms. Carrie Housenick, our media specialist, organized an amazing reading race, trying to get students involved and get them reading. Students in all grades competed by turning in their reading times. The competition ran through an entire semester, and we'd like to congratulate Ms. Sarah Marshall-Gala. She was the overall winner with 19,251 minutes of reading. Way to go, Sarah Marshall. That's okay. We can recognize her. You can get your picture. Great job. Our last student recognition is to recognize our MMS Odyssey of the Mind team. They won third place in the Coastal Regional Competition. So we'd like to welcome Savannah Percival, Kayla Austin, Melody Sanders, Gracie Perry, and Marezza Holton. Good job. That concludes our student recognitions.
Thank you, Tammy.
Should we continue on with our teacher? Okay. Our first staff recognition begins with our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Michelle Winters. Ms. Winters is truly a rock star teacher. She is energetic, passionate, and engaging. Her relationship-building skills are observed on a daily basis as she interacts with students in the classroom and throughout the building. Every moment she talks with a student, there is a teachable moment happening, whether it be a fun fact, a life skill, or just about making good choices. She is truly a joy, and we are honored to have her here at Mania Middle School. Ms. Winters taught social studies for 14 years, five of them here at Mania Middle School. She is currently working on writing her first book, Weight Class, What Was I Saying? Teaching With ADHD. And trust me, if anyone can write this book, it's Mrs. Winters. Mrs. Winters obtained National Board Certification this year for social studies, which is a wonderful accomplishment. Ms. Winters attended and presented at the North Carolina Council for the Social Studies Conference with Dr. Parker in Greensboro. They presented on the topic Using Inquiry to Teach Political Cartoons. She has applied to present at the 102nd National Council for the Social Studies in Philadelphia in December, and this will be on the same topic as well as her classroom economy. Ms. Winters also presented and created Toolkit website for the county on classroom economy. And this past summer, Ms. Winters also wrote the seventh grade social studies curriculum for Dare County. We are very proud of her. Ms. Winters, please come forward and accept your certificate. You're good. Next, we would like to recognize our Classified Employee of the Year, Ms. Arlene Mazur. Ms. Arlene Mazur, she was a vocal music band and theatrical teacher-director for the middle school and high school in Southern New Jersey for 30 years. After her retirement from New Jersey, she and her husband moved to the Outer Banks. She began her second career as a substitute teacher at Mania High School for 10 years. She is currently serving as an ECTA here at Mania Middle. In her spare time, she is a Blue Star Mother for active military women and men who serve our country and who live in our area. This organization sends packages to all local deployed service members on a monthly basis. Thank you, Ms. Mazur, for your dedication to Dare County Schools and to Mania Middle. Next, I'd like to recognize our teachers who have earned National Board Certification. One of these earned it actually last year, but we were not able to recognize her as we should, but this year we will. Ms. Michelle Winters and Ms. Kimberly Dixon. National Board Certification? Yeah. You're welcome. Good job, ladies. Our last recognition, and certainly not least, is to recognize Ms. Carrie Housenick. She is known as our Grant Queen around here. She applies for grants every year and gets us great resources for our students. She received a grant this year from Dare Education Foundation for 3D pens, so we want to thank her for her. Good job. And that does conclude our recognitions.
Thanks again, Tammy. Next on our agenda... Next on our agenda is instructional highlights, and I will turn it back over to Dr. Parker.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Twitty. We're excited to bring Principal Harper back here in just a minute to share a video that she's helped produce about some of the highlights she wants to bring before you at Mania Middle School. And then at the conclusion of that, Ms. Harper will be available for comments and questions. And then we also want to end the instructional highlight, bring up a focus on Mania High School, which, as we've shared with the board, is applying for an Avid demonstration. And we have joining with us some of our friends from Avid, Mr. Chuck Kennesi and Dr. Kristy McMullin, are going to share a bit of the process and really brag on Mania High School for a little bit. So we had that prepared. But we're going to kick it off with Ms. Harper to come up, and if you would, Tammy, introduce the video for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. This is my third year here at Mania Middle School as principal. My first year was very interesting as we faced a pandemic. The main school goals that we had in place beginning of 2019, of course, were to close learning gaps and to grow our students. Here we are, 2022, and these goals are obviously still in place as the gap got wider and we have greater challenges. The pandemic hit our students' learning in so many ways and with such intensity, so the only way to tackle this is with even more intense plans. As we prepared for the start of the school year, we were provided with an opportunity to hire strategic staff with ESSER funds. Ms. Laura Velastro, you will see in the video, was hired to be a math and ELA interventionist, and Ms. Ron Britton was hired as our MTS coordinator and curriculum coach. These two gifted teachers are key to accomplishing our goals. Our amazing teachers work with these two ladies. They use an array of student data, target learning needs, and customize and provide individualized learning plans for our students. Using the assessment data from using the interventionist and teacher feedback on the student impact, it has been very impressive. Not only have students improved in math and/or ELA, but the strategies and skills they have learned have helped them improve in all subjects. Furthermore, the ripple effects have been positive with increased student focus, increased confidence, and as students feel success in their learning. To provide even further support for our students, we have before and after-school tutoring four days a week. We have an ELA and math teacher available every day, either in the morning or afternoon, so that there are numerous tutoring opportunities to fit students' schedules. Along with closing the learning gaps, another school-wide goal is to make MMS an Avid school of distinction. The Avid program is run by the most passionate Avid teacher in the world, Ms. Harry Edwards. Ms. Edwards has led several Ms. Edwards has led several professional developments for our teachers on Avid Strategies. This year, our focus is WICHER in every single classroom: writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. You will see this highlighted in the video. Using these WICHER strategies in every classroom is a key element to our students being successful. Another MMS goal is to increase community involvement. We have had several projects that have included community involvement, such as Shark Tank, the 8th Grade Science Fair, Career Fair, CTE Night, just to name a few. But our 6th Grade Math teacher, Ms. Stevie Gallup, will provide a wonderful example in the video of the relationships we want to have in our communities and with our families. Ms. Gallup worked with Ms. Oglesby, who was our career counselor, to organize a day where community business members came to the class and discussed how they use math every day in their careers. This was a powerful lesson for Ms. Gallup's students as they were able to see real-world connections. And finally, in the video, you'll see, if you recall, our 7th grader, Ms. Sophie Austin, she won an essay contest on The Season of Giving. Her essay is on providing a butterfly garden at MMS, and it won her a $4,000 grant from the Gaddy Foundation. This project has been such a joy to watch and unfold. Sophie has worked with Daniel Hasek, the garden manager at Elizabethan Gardens, to help choose plants and lay out for the garden. Also, our science classes in all grades worked with butterfly larvae, maintaining and watching their metamorphosis until today, when they released over 200 painted butterflies. Thank you, Sophie, for such a wonderful idea that brought school and community together once again, and Mr. and Mrs. Gaddy for providing the opportunity. These are just a few amazing things that are happening here at MMS. We have amazing staff, students, and families that love to be involved and who embrace opportunities to contribute and celebrate learning. So at this time, we will watch the highlights of Manio Middle School.
We are, as a school, embracing the Avid elective strategies that are used in the Avid elective class and making them school-wide. And so, our goal this year has been to focus on WICHER, which is writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading in all classes. Through that focus, we will be headed toward our goal of an Avid School of Distinction. And it is a wonderful opportunity, learning how to organize themselves, learning how to communicate, learning how to take better notes in classes and study with the goal of career and college. We talk a lot about how to make it in the higher-level classes that will make you successful in college. And all of that means that you have to be a good leader, have to have communication skills in leadership roles. You also have to know how to take the notes and study the notes in a way that's going to be productive for you to be successful. Another initiative that we are taking at Manio Middle School next year is to kind of pilot a new way of entering the Avid elective. Almost all 6th grade students will have one nine weeks of Avid, which means they will learn some organizational skills, some note-taking skills, and some leadership responsibility skills. Just next week, our 8th graders will get to go to Avid Day at East Carolina University. They will be hearing about things that have to do with getting into college, how to be successful in college. We'll be doing group work. We'll also take a tour of the university. And that is, to me, really powerful because most of our students at this age level have never stepped foot on a campus. And so, it's really exciting to watch their eyes light up.
I work with smaller groups of kids. It's really enjoyable because I pull them out of different parts of their school day. We work in smaller groups of anywhere from three to six students, and we work on different skills that the teachers have targeted as being skills that are for different skill gaps or sometimes enrichment targets for different students. My position was created using ESER funds to close learning gaps with students. Some created by COVID, and some learning gaps would generally be there anyways as students progressed through their middle school years. So their teachers, either in ELA or math, looked at different assessment data from ClassWorks or from the state tests to put together lists of students and specific targets that they wanted the students to work on. It's been very enjoyable because it gives the students an opportunity to work in a real small group setting where we can use more manipulatives and look at the student themselves and exactly what they need to work on on a daily basis.
One thing we're trying to do here to close that achievement gap that was created by COVID is that we're offering morning and afternoon tutoring for both language arts and math. We want to make sure that students feel that confidence again. And in the classroom, I've seen where students are raising their hands more, they feel more confident answering questions, they're answering their questions correctly, and it's a good feeling for them and for me as we move forward. We are offering both language arts and math tutoring, morning and afternoon, four days a week.
One of our school goals is to increase community involvement and build relationships with the community. And Ms. Gallup, in 6th grade, approached me about getting community members in her classroom so that the students can make connections between math and the real world. This idea led to inviting 13 community members into my classroom, a lot are previous students at Manio Schools. And we had people that went to college come in, we had people that did not come to college come in. So the kids really got a good variety of careers to listen to that day and see what options they have. But you can go to school in Manio, North Carolina, and come back to Manio, North Carolina, and be just as successful.
There was an essay contest called the Season of Giving Essay Contest, which I participated in. It was an essay contest about something that I would like to give back to the community. So I wrote about a butterfly garden because I feel like the impacts of that on the community would be really great. It would help with pollination, it would be a beautiful thing for people to be around, it would be open to the community. So then, I went to the Board of Education meeting once I won, and the Gaddy Foundation donated $4,000 so that we could actually make the butterfly garden. So we have been working on that, and we have a greenhouse that we're getting, we have all these plants, we're getting lots of benches and seating. Science classes are raising the butterflies that we are going to be releasing. I've also gotten help from Dan, he's a master gardener at the Elizabethan Gardens. He's been coming and helping with like the math and like figuring out where to place stuff and what would be best for the garden for the butterflies and stuff like that.
Any board member have any questions for Tammy? Thank you, Tammy.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harper, I appreciate that. And I also want to say thank you to all of the staff and students that participate in the video. And I continue to be encouraged by the amazingly creative and innovative things that go on here at Manio Middle School. And you watch that and you just can't help but just be impressed and feel good about how creative and thoughtful our kids are. I also want to say thank you again to the Gaddy Foundation for having generously supported Manio Middle School, not just in the Butterfly Initiative and the Scholarship Contest, but in many other ways as well. And we are thankful for our community partners, not just here in Manio, but certainly in Manio for their work and support for Manio Middle School. So thank you, Ms. Harper, for preparing that and for taking the time to share with us some of the great work that you guys are doing here. We do want to now bring up Mr. Chuck Hennessy and Dr. Kristi McMullin, and they're going to share with the board an overview of the Avid demonstration process, which Manio High School is going through. And just for anyone that's here with us in the audience or might be listening online, Avid is a program that we have in all of our middle and high schools, and it is a program that stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination. And students can apply and they can be accepted into this program. But one of the things that makes Manio High School special and has qualified them to begin this process for Avid demonstration is that Manio High School students don't have to be enrolled in the Avid program to experience Avid skills and preparation. And one example of that is we believe that regardless of who you are and what path you might take, college, career, whatever, we think our students ought to know how to be organized, for example. And we think if you have a chance to be successful in school and class, then you've got to be able to manage your time, your resources, and be organized with everything that's going on. That's just one example of the types of skills that Avid teaches our students. Because when they leave us, we won't be going with them to college or career, right? But we want to send them off with skills that we know they can use to be successful when they leave our schools. And Avid is a program that does just that. So we're very excited about the work that's going on at Manio Middle School and Manio High School. We want the board to be able to get a glimpse of this process. We're very hopeful that in the coming months, Manio High School will be able to go through this process and achieve the demonstration status. Our friends from Avid are going to share what that exactly would look like. And our goal is also to continue to replicate the successes here in Manio at our other schools, and I would love to be able to see all of our schools get to the point where they have the qualifications and they're ready to become where Manio High School is. And we're moving that way. We've invested some resources for our teachers in development, and we have some plans this summer to continue to do that as well. So I'm very excited about where Avid is, and I'm looking forward to, as we continue to grow this program in the district. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Hennessy and Dr. McMullin to come forward. I will say this, that Mr. Hennessy works with us pretty closely in this year, and I found out as I met Dr. McMullin today that she has traveled today all the way from Florida to be with us particularly tonight and has a meeting tomorrow and is going to be going back. So she felt this was so important that she came here to share this with you. So this was kind of a long trip for the meeting, but thank you for doing that, and it's been a pleasure to have our friends from Avid join us. So I want to invite you guys to come forward and share with us, and again, thank you for joining us.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity, and you set us up quite nicely, Tammy, thank you, because you said all the things that needed to be said about Avid. You showed it to us, which is so important, and we just consider it an honor to be here. So we're going to breeze right through this because the important thing is the kids, and you're going to get to see them too. So just saying hi, my name is Dr. Kristi McMullin, and I'm the Associate Area Director for Florida, Georgia, North, and South Carolina for Avid. But the reason that matters is because for the last 16 years, I've dedicated myself to making sure that educators get better at what they do so that students have options when they graduate from high school and beyond, which is exactly what you all are doing here at your schools. This is my counterpart.
And my name is Chuck Hennessy, and I am a 30-year-retired veteran of the North Carolina Public Schools as a teacher. I've been working now for Avid about the time she started, I started teaching Avid. And within the last six years, I retired, and I'm working full-time for Avid as the program manager. So I support your schools here in this area and throughout our Eastern Carolinas.
So Avid's mission is to close the opportunity gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. But it's so much more than that. When we say opportunity gap, we're really talking about what the adults in this equation are doing to make sure that our students have options. We don't want any student to graduate from high school and have no idea what their next steps are. Because when they turn 18, that's when life starts, not when it stops. So we really speak to how to make that happen by affecting the adults in the building. So this is probably not something that you do normally at a board meeting, but I'm going to ask you to whisper to the person next to you, all of you, the one word that speaks to you out of that mission statement. So just pick a word, which one resonates with you? Oh, I heard "global." That was a loud stage whisper, I like it, thank you. Go ahead. Keep whispering, I can't hear anything. I heard "success" too. Do you all want to shout one out? What word stuck with you? Opportunity, love it. Yes, and I see some nods, right? Well, there are lots of words you could pick from there, but ultimately, it's about preparing people for their next steps, whether that's the adults or the students.
So, this is the Avid College and Career Readiness Framework. This particular model is nothing but a graphic representation of exactly what we do in Avid. So if we take a look at this, you'll notice that there's a triangle there. And that triangle, the top part of that triangle, shows what our kids need and what we want to make sure that they get. The first thing that you'll see over there is rigorous academic preparedness. We want to make sure that every student we have, regardless of what path they choose, will be ready for the most challenging courses that they will encounter in an educational situation. We also have over on that side, opportunity knowledge. It is so important that our kids understand what options and opportunities they have. So today, I had the blessing of being at ECU, and I didn't know that they were coming, but when Manio Middle School showed up, I was thrilled. I've got pictures for you. And as well, First in Flight was also there. Again, it's that opportunity. I grew up with my elementary school on a college campus, but I never walked that campus to see what it was like. So these kids had the opportunity today, not only to have different people to speak to them, but on top of that, they had a chance to experience that through the lens of how does this work for my success in the future. The other big piece that we give kids is student agency. And that's that confidence, that understanding of their areas of strength and their areas of growth, and being able to capitalize on that so they can create the most successful life that they can have. The teachers, what do we do? Well, we insist on rigor, not just settling, but setting high standards and giving them the supports that they need so that they can be successful. We also look at breaking down barriers, and I can't help but think of Mary Catherine Swanson, the founder of Avid, where she used to sneak into the counselor's office and make the roster for the gifted classes just a little bit longer. So what we do is we make sure that we destroy all the barriers that keep our kids from having the opportunities that they should have. Aligning the work. Now, we all know in every system, everybody's got initiatives. And so what this does is, it doesn't add to the plate, but it is the plate. It's a way to organize it, so we all speak the same language and we can understand that we all have a common goal, and that's the success of the students. So advocating for the students is something that we start as adults, and after a while, we model it for those students, and they are soon ready to advocate for themselves. Those are the things that we as educators do. Now, you've noticed that this is all based around what we call the four domains. And if I may, real quick, culture is what we're talking about in a culture of success. So whether or not it's college or career readiness, we want our students to have choices, opportunities, and options, and to be prepared for any avenue that they might choose. In order to do that, we have to have systems in place so that they can be successful. We also have to have instruction from teachers that is top-notch, and that's what we do at Avid. We train teachers and educators. And last but not least, it's the leadership piece. And you've seen two great leaders, John Luciano and Sarah also, over at the high school, who also lead by holding us accountable as educators to make sure that our kids get the very best they possibly can. That framework is a lot like the framework in each one of the districts. We know that it's similar to the one that you use here, and that's the success of it. So if you'll notice at the very bottom, there's something here, relational capacity. Kids don't care how much you know, as long as they know how much you care. So by establishing relationships with the students that creates a safe space for them to know that they're cared for and a brave space so that they can take risks and eventually be able to handle that rigorous work, that's when the true test of the ideal environment for their success comes in. So we're going to take a look at a movie. We asked the students at Mantio High School to tell us, what has Avid done for you? I want you to take a look at how they did it. Now, as you watch this, I want you to think, what resonates here with you? What are you hearing here? Okay?
How's the coffee? Everything taste good?
Yeah, everything's really good.
Hey, Kyla, how you doing? What took you so long to get here?
Sorry, guys, I was late. I just figured out that I failed my math test, and it's just been a real struggle right now, and I could really use a tutor.
Oh, Kyla, you should have joined Avid when you had a chance.
Yeah, we do TRFs to help with subjects we're struggling with.
What's a TRF?
Oh, a TRF? It's a tutorial request form. And basically, you get in groups with people who are also struggling the same subject, and it's like a tutoring session where you try to help each other out.
Yeah, we do it weekly, and it helps a lot.
Yeah, and it's also like nice to know that you're not the only one struggling in class.
Yeah, we also do lots of other helpful study habits, like focus notes and one-pagers.
Yeah, another one is C-Notes. Those are a great organizational way to keep up with notes and to help you understand the material better.
Yeah, and same thing with one-pagers. Remember, one-pager is like more colorful. Remember, one-pagers is like more colorful, and just like it's able to stick in your mind more if you're a colored person.
Wow, that sounds super helpful. I mean, I would have a struggle keeping up with all those papers. I'm awful at saying "organized."
Avid helps solve that problem, too. We keep planners and we keep binders to help us keep all our materials organized, like by class.
Yeah, as well as A binders. We use that for saying "organized" online as well.
Yeah, and with our binders, you know, they are getting checked by our teachers, so they help us keep us really organized and stay on task in making sure we're completing assignments.
Wow, I didn't really know that class was actually that helpful.
Oh, yeah, it's been my biggest support system since I joined the program, and my grades and overall have been amazing. I've been in here since I was in, like, sixth grade.
Yeah, Avid's seriously like a family.
Speaking of family, my parents have been drilling me about college applications. I'm thinking about giving up.
What? You can't give up. Is that what dinosaurs would do?
I can be quite confused. It's a lot to go into Avid, but it's truly for the better.
Yeah, between mock interviews, public speaking, college research projects, creating scholarships, and just like resumes and all the stuff that goes over, it actually, my college applications went like a breeze.
Nice.
Yeah, without the program, I would have struggled to get all my questions answered and just honestly, like, pick my top college.
I know. I would not have been able to make college a reality without Avid.
I totally agree. Avid has really helped me. It's mainly like a prep class, honestly.
Wow, really? A class does that all for you?
It's not just any class. It's a support system that keeps me focused on my work.
Yeah, I'll never forget the memories and skills I've learned in Avid.
All right. I think, guys, that we should possibly meet back here in a year, just to go over how everybody's been doing.
That's a great idea. I would love to hear your memories.
Let's make a pact.
Thank you.
Avid!
Because I'm older and my hearing's bad. What resonated here with you? What did you see that struck you? Yell it out.
That you didn't talk anything about people that don't want to go to college. They could be plumbers, electricians, or something that doesn't require it.
And everything that those kids need are used on your first job. Even the academic skills, the writing and reading. So everything is there. This helps every student throughout our school. Thank you. What else? What else did you see or hear? Anybody?
Well, it's the global portion of it.
So the global portion of it is that we have to get our kids so competitive that they can compete on any market. Now, way back in the old days, when I was in school with Harry Tubman, we didn't have the possibility of being in the same classroom with kids in China. But our kids can do that now. Using the internet.
Why? We want them to be in the classroom with China, with social.
With any, with any country, with any country. That gives them the opportunity to be better exposed, and it puts them on a level where they can compete with anybody in the world.
If you've researched the latest USA stats for math and language, English reading, we went from first in the world to approximately 13th or 14th. So where's the change?
So that's a great question, and change doesn't happen overnight, right? So it's about limits and making sure that our limits are limitless for our kids. So what Manio High School has done a beautiful job of so far is we asked them a week ago, could you think you could make a video? And the kids came up with that without any coaching. The idea is giving students the tools they need to be successful, and then letting them decide what success looks like. So success might be that they go to a four-year school, it might be that they go to a two-year school, trade school, but they have the right skill set. So I want to brag on Manio High School for a minute, because they have decided to do this with such fidelity that only 3% of our 7,500 schools across the nation make it to National Demonstration School status. We only have 247 across the nation, and only five of them are in North Carolina. So this is a big deal, the fact that you've decided to put yourself out there and say, we want to do this right. We want to do this well. And so what they're getting ready to embark on is the opportunity, and I know you can't see that, but don't worry, you don't need to. We'll give you this presentation. The idea is, when you do something well and become a demonstration school, that means that anybody from across the country can learn from you. So it's, your high school will become a teaching and learning center, not just for your county, which is amazing and wonderful, but for anybody across the state of North Carolina and beyond that wants to see what this is supposed to look like. So I look at the demonstration school status as kind of like cleaning up your house, right? When you are having guests over, you tend to clean with a different level of fervor, right? You start to look at things and go, hmm, that plant would look so much better over there, why don't we move it? So what happens during the demonstration school status is that Mr. Hennessy comes in, along with anybody else who wants to, and you start to look at your systems, and you start to say, okay, are we doing a good job for all kids? Are we making sure that all kids have? And it's much bigger than just graduation, whether or not kids are graduating from high school. It's what can they do next? Are they all exposed? It's college, career, and beyond. It's making sure that every kid has a place and that nobody gets left behind. So what Manio High School is doing is saying, we would really like to do this well. That means that we could go into any classroom on campus, and we would see WICER, which Tammy's classes did a great job of explaining, writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading everywhere. So this is typically about a year-long process that's going to start soon, as a matter of fact, tomorrow. He's going to go check out what's going on there. And it's really just saying, we want people to be able to come here and learn from us. And that's something that Dare County should be very proud of, because again, there are only five in the entire state, and you guys have decided that you want to make it six. And I think that's pretty amazing. So Avid is a system that allows teachers to get excellent at what they do, and administrators to know what to look for and get excellent at what they do, so that students have options upon graduation. So that's kind of the demo school process. It does take about a year. We come and celebrate you when it's all said and done, but the idea is making sure that everything you're doing is done with fidelity. It's kind of like going to McDonald's and ordering a Big Mac and knowing what it's going to taste like. That's what doing Avid with fidelity looks like, too. It looks like it's supposed to, based on the 42 years that we've been doing this. So what questions do you all have for us? Yes, Joe?
Pardon me. The cohesion of the students and the trust that they seem to have in one another to be able to converse with one another and tell them situations, you know, things that didn't go so well, and the other people chiming in to try to assist to make them, there's a support system there for them. So I mean, that's the beauty, and hats off to what Manio High School has done in terms of the leadership at the school, not only with Mr. Luciano, but with also Ralph Cleaver running the program. I think they've done a great job.
Thank you so much for that. And that wasn't staged. Yes, of course, they were doing a play on Friends, but the reality is, those kinds of conversations happen all the time. And something that was mentioned earlier about it affecting every student, so Avid students, when we say Avid students, those are the ones that take the Avid elective during the day and are in Mr. Cleaver's class, but every student benefits from Avid, once a high school or a middle school decides they want that to be the case. So if I'm your English teacher and I have you first period, maybe five of the students are Avid elective students, but the other 20 are not in the elective, and I'm teaching all of them how to do focus notes, and I'm teaching all of them about their opportunities beyond high school. So the idea is, this affects every student positively and will affect your entire district as you continue to have this teaching and learning center right here in your backyard. Other questions?
Any other questions from any board member? Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you for letting us be here.
Mr. Henderson, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for presenting that, Dr. McMullin, and for Mr. Hennessy, and they're going to have to get back on the road, and so thank y'all for joining us, and safe travels, Dr. McMullin. But we're very excited about this, as you can see, and, you know, one thing I do want to share before we end this portion, Mr. Chairman, is Ms. Pritchard is, in addition to her role as Assistant Principal, also serves as our Avid District Coordinator and Support, and so she works with our other high schools and middle schools. She supports teachers. She works with organizing all things Avid, and that's a big responsibility. So Sarah, thank you for your work you do on that, and she and I come have dialogue, and we talk about how we can continue to strengthen our program, and we would not be where we are right now without Sarah's work district-wide in helping our other schools. So I want to, I want to appreciate her on that for just a minute. And at the end of the school year, which is, you know, shockingly, is coming up on us, Sarah also organizes a recognition ceremony and awards banquet for our Avid seniors, who every year receive a lot of money in scholarships beyond high school, and we'll be doing that recognition this year at Jeanette's Pier, and it'll be a really beautiful evening for our parents to recognize our Avid kids, and Sarah's work in that has been paramount. So thank you again for your work, Sarah, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting us put this on the agenda, and that concludes the instructional highlights.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. I really do appreciate the hard work in the Avid program. Next, I'd like to turn the public comments over to our attorney, Richard Schwartz.
We'll now move to public comment, and I'll read the following statement before we begin. The Dare County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. This portion of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest or concern from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue for questions and answers or for impromptu board responses. The board may determine whether to provide information or responses to public comments if it is necessary or appropriate at a later time. Concerns regarding school personnel are usually most effectively addressed with the administration at the school or central office levels or through other existing board policies, and those alternatives are encouraged by the board. The board appreciates courteous and respectful presentations. Obscene, vulgar, indecent, abusive, threatening, or profane statements, or statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or imminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Each person or organization will be granted three minutes. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. We will be using an electronic timing system that will provide the speaker with a green light when time starts. The light will move to yellow when the speaker has one minute left, and the red light indicates that time is up, and the speaker will be asked to leave the podium to allow for the next speaker to address the board. If a speaker wishes to submit documents to the board as part of their public comment and did not submit the documents to the person collecting the public comment sign-up forms prior to the meeting, they may leave the documents at the podium when they come forward to address the board. At no time during public comment or any other time during the board meeting shall the speaker or anyone else attending the meeting approach the board table for any reason and was invited to do so by the board chair. Any person who fails to comply with these guidelines or causes substantial or continued disruption to the orderly conduct of the Board of Education's business will be removed. Failure to vacate the meeting after being directed is a criminal offense and violation of North Carolina General Statutes 14-288.4 and 143-318.17. The first person signed up for public comment this evening is Helen Fur. Speakers are asked to please begin by stating their full name for the record. Please come forward, Ms. Fur.
Hi, I'm kind of glad I'm going first. My name is Helen Fur. I live in Collington. I have two children at First Flight Middle, and I don't really have too much to say. I just have a few questions. Some may have been answered, and I just haven't found them. The first one would be really just an update on when we might get lockers for middle school and when we might get back to lunch. It would be really nice for our kids to have something to look forward to for the end of the year. My next comment is something my daughter would love me to bring up, so I'm bringing it up. It kind of goes along with what Avid and what some of the things I've heard today about interacting with our schools and field trips. I know as soon as you hear field trips, it's like budget, budget, budget. I just feel there's an opportunity to find things locally, partnering with the Restaurant Association, local government, the fisheries, CSI, COA, like anything to up our real-life experiences for our kids, like 100%. Would love to support that. I would also encourage any of you, all of you, to come to our Parks and Rec Advisory Board. The next meeting is May 26. I'm on the advisory council. I love our Parks and Rec. I want to support the connection between our school sports and our Parks and Rec programs. I find it a little discouraging that in the older ages, and this may be a variety of reasons, from, you know, the information's there and nobody's going to it, the programs are there, but what I feel it comes down to is that when you get into the older middle school ages, we are having a disconnect between kids that are on middle school sports, and then if they are not on those sports, transitioning to Parks and Rec, and whether there's a place for them. I'll be more direct with some of our female sports, and I don't want to put names on it, but we, I just want kids to be involved. I want kids that want to exercise, have a chance, and I just feel like we are losing some kids, and I do blame some things on the last three years. But anyway, I know I have a few minutes. Finally, and I'm so happy Odyssey of the Mind was here, and I'm so happy that the teacher that got us into Odyssey of the Mind is here, because I would not feel right if I didn't say, we have Odyssey of the Mind here for the next two years. I would love to get support for everything. Thank you, Ms. Fur. I appreciate it. Sorry, thank you.
The next speaker is David Bragg.
David Bragg, nags head. First of all, I was very disappointed to see none of the school board members, nor any of the administrators, at the movie Sunday night about whose children are they anyway? It was a very informative film about what's going on in this country, and I think it would have been very nice if some of you would have shown up to see what was going on. Secondly, I had emailed Mr. Twitty earlier today. Somehow, we have a issue with House Bill 1640. The school board should not and cannot collect rent from any individuals or companies, per General Statute 6658, which this particular House bill did not override. So my question for the attorney is, where'd the $163,000 a year go? Where was it collected and where was it disbursed? I want a forensic audit of that money, and let's find out where it went. Thirdly, as a child, I learned responsibility. If I was going to move someplace, I learned how much it would cost to live in that area. When I moved to Miami from upstate New York, I had a big nut to pay for rent. So I had to get a roommate. So I didn't want a roommate anymore. I got a second job. No one ever came out and said, you know what? We should build some housing for Dave Bragg, because he came down here to Miami to work for the government, and we should give him housing. If you don't understand what the cost of living is in the area you're going to move to, then we have an issue. And if these are teachers that are not understanding that, we have a bigger issue. And finally, since I got, well, I got time left, I guess I should wing it all the time. Lastly, let's do some surveys of the teachers, because I hear some people get up here and say, it's the Board of Education that's the problem. Well, I don't believe that, because I've talked to numerous teachers. It's not the Board of Education. I'm not going to say who it is. Let's get the surveys going, and let's see about the administration, about the superintendent, and some of the other people involved with how the teachers feel. And yeah, let's look at that $163,000 a year, and let's look at some of the higher-paid administrators in this area, and let's cut their pay a little bit and give it to the teachers. Maybe we could keep some around, and maybe they won't have to look for subsidized housing from Dare County. And I still got 10 seconds. Thank you.
Next is Liv Cook.
Hi, my name is Liv Cook. I'm here today to talk to you about teacher retention. I've put in front of you, hopefully, I did. I've put in front of you, hopefully, I did submit my paperwork with my comment, a little bit of data. I was a science teacher, so I made some charts from the data that I went through the Dare County Board of Education meeting minutes for the past 10 years. No, I don't have a lot of time on my hands, but I am committed to my former colleagues and the respect that the teaching profession deserves. And when I noticed years ago that Dare County Schools was experiencing a mass exodus of their highly qualified teachers, I did reach out to the Board of Education via email. I only heard back from one board member, and we had a lengthy hour-and-a-half-long conversation about how he wanted Dare County Schools to be number one in the state, which is a fantastic goal, and that, you know, maybe at that time, this was probably about four years ago, that maybe the teachers who were leaving couldn't hang with the current pressures from the new administration. I can tell you, they can all hang. Some of them just have other options, and they take them. Teachers are resilient. Of course, they deserve to make more money than they do, but they also play a big role here in Dare County for their families. Some of them are the primary breadwinner, some of them are the supplier of health care, some of them are the second income that the family needs. There's a million reasons why teachers deserve everything they have, but there's also some very particular reasons that the Dare County Board of Education is ignoring that's causing them to leave. So, I encourage you to look at this graph. We had a changing of the guard. Dr. Stuber just left in 2017. Dr. Farley came in in 2017. On the Dare County Schools' current webpage, there's a study, it's on the homepage, actually, of Dare County Schools, the 2017 Roadmap of Need. This was published in 2017. Dare County Schools rang in at number nine in the state in the overall rankings. In that same year, you hired a superintendent who came from the school district that ranked 100th, dead last. Board of Education, you are failing your teachers. You are failing your students. We need to retain our teachers. Happy teachers, don't leave the beach. Please do more to hold on to your highly qualified, highly experienced teachers. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Richard. Next item on the agenda is the announcements, and I'd like to turn that over to Dr. Farley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Few announcements. We want to congratulate Jennifer Kovacs. Jennifer is a health science teacher at First Flight High School, who's been named the Dare County Schools' NCAT Teacher of the Year. She's a wonderful teacher. Many thanks for her leadership at First Flight High School. We also want to congratulate the Odyssey of the Mind team at Kitty Hawk Elementary School, who won the state championship about 10 days ago, and they are going on to the world championship, and they're traveling seven students and some chaperones to Ames, Iowa in May. So, congratulations to those kids. They did a fabulous job.
Have fun in Ames.
What's that?
Have fun in Ames, Iowa.
Yeah, yeah. We also want to congratulate, so this is the time of year where our schools vote for and recognize and nominate Teachers of the Year and Classified Employees of the Year at each school, and that's going on throughout the week, and the schools kind of at their own pace this week are recognizing and making those announcements. So, by Friday, we'll have all those that we'll send out district-wide. At Central Office, we do have a Classified Employee of the Year, and it's Rashad Daniels, formerly here from Manio Middle School. And many thanks to Rashad. He's in the Finance Department, and he's doing a fabulous job. Next, many of us attended the COA ribbon-cutting ceremony this past week. Fabulous building and great ceremony. Looking forward to that partnership being enhanced, and we want to thank our county commissioners, congratulate Bobby Outen and Dean Sweeney, who a lot of times goes unnoticed, for his fabulous work and leadership, and that's a great building, and we're very pleased. Part of the ceremony, there's an announcement that they've almost doubled the number of kids who are getting the Dare Guarantee, so that's fabulous. And then lastly, want to wish everyone, staff, students, families a fabulous spring break. Hopefully, we get some great weather and 10 well-deserved days off. So, I'll have for announcements, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Farley. We'll move on to the next item of the agenda, which is approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the Personnel Consent Agenda, minutes of the March 8, 2022 Special and Regular Session Meetings, and the Budget Amendment. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion on the floor from Margaret. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Woody. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move now to the reports and items for information. The first report will be provided by Ms. Silverthorne, the Executive Director of Beach Food Pantry.
And Dr. Parker's going to introduce Ms. Silverthorne.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're excited to have our friends join us this evening and give you a presentation of some of the work that's going on, and we are joined by Ms. Silverthorne and Matt Melvin. This will go down on this wireless mic. Thank you. And Ms. Silverthorne is the Executive Director for the Beach Food Pantry, and so we'll just let our friends go ahead and take it away. So, thank you, guys. We've got some of our amazing young people who've helped prepare the presentation this evening, so we're looking forward to hearing from them. Thank you, guys. Yes, this one will take you right there, and that one goes forward.
Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Parker, Dr. Parker, and as he mentioned, my name's Elizabeth Silverthorne. I'm the Executive Director of the Beach Food Pantry. We started a program this year that is our Youth Advisory Board, and we're going to have some of them tell you about it, but this is a much larger group, and I just wanted to mention that we asked them to come up with one capstone project, and they actually came up with two, and they're working on a third initiative, and this is one of them, their awareness team. The other was a mobile pantry team. You'll hear more about that in a moment. And they wanted to come and present to you all and also to the parents and the other students that were in attendance. So, we're thankful to have them, and we're going to get started.
Lucas Bailey, MES, also from Manio Elementary School. The Youth Advisory Board is a leadership program designed for two reasons: to give us nonprofit board experience and to bring together a group of people who are able to see firsthand the effects of food insecurity in their peers and who can work together to come up with creative ideas that will help solve this problem.
I am Anaya, and I am from Manio Elementary School, and what we're doing is, our mission statement is to joyfully feed food insecure families and eliminate hunger in our community. We meet monthly to discuss ways that we can assist the pantry, brainstorm ideas for projects we'd like to tackle, and vote on important decisions. Specifically, we have decided to bring awareness to this issue by creating flyers, T-shirts, and signs, and distributing them throughout the school systems and other organizations in our community. I am wearing one of the T-shirts now. We also have chosen to focus our efforts on the mobile pantry event that took place at COA in Manio on March 19, 2022. We served 74 households.
My name is Elizabeth Mary, and I go to Manio Middle School. The reason why this matters is because, according to the Beach Food Pantry, an estimated 5,680 people in Dare County are food insecure, and 1,550 of those are children. Hungry students are more likely to have less energy, be distracted and less interested in school, have lower math scores, repeat a grade, or come to school late or miss entirely.
My name is Nix Fur, and I go to First Flight Middle, and what we want you to be aware of is the problem of food insecurity right here in our community, the actions that are being taken by the Beach Food Pantry and the Youth Advisory Board to prevent hunger in Dare County, and ways that individuals can help, whether that be through donations, volunteering, or as simple as spreading the word about what we're doing. Thank you for your time.
I also want to mention Matt Melvin is on the Beach Food Pantry Board of Directors, and he has been the liaison for the Youth Advisory Board, so we're glad to have him here tonight. Are there any questions?
Any board members have any questions?
I would just like to compliment Elizabeth. In the summertime, she feeds all the kids every week. Thank you very much for picking that up.
I'd like to say thank you for all you do.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you all.
Next, we'll hear from Dr. Farley for information on the draft of public school budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next two items are related to each other. So, first is, the board has a first draft of the public school budget for the upcoming 2022-2023 school year. Our operating budget in Dare County Schools in the upcoming year is $70 million, almost $71 million, and it's broken down by program. And so, North Carolina is one of the few states that has this system where you have a program such as 001 teachers, and you get a certain allotment for the number of teachers that you have, and that's based upon the number of students who attend your school system or the projection by the state. Another program is Central Office Administration. That's 002. Another example, school psychologists are 006. So, you can see the breakdown in the $36,000 or $36 million from the state. We're very fortunate in Dare County Schools, of the $71 million in our public school budget, over a third is local, which is really unheard of across the state. The budget includes the state, federal, and local funding. You'll see a summary of the capital improvement plan, which the board approved at the last meeting. As you know, we have a five-year capital improvement plan prioritized school by school. It also includes capital outlay, so capital outlay are smaller projects typically less than $50,000, maybe replacing carpet in the school or painting a hallway in a particular school. It also includes our child nutrition program and our after-school program. You will also note, as you study over the next three weeks, so the process in North Carolina is, the draft budget goes before the board tonight. The board will have till the next business meeting in May before they adopt, and our board has a really good practice of having a workshop. So, and that'll be the next topic we'll talk about. There's a recommendation from the PECAD Committee about having an extensive workshop to go through all the details. What is included in the requests of the county is an increase in the teacher supplement of $500 per teacher. So, as many of you are aware, we started a teacher supplement commission pre-COVID about two and a half years ago. We had 25 teachers and leaders and central office administrators and a couple board members who participated in that project. And the teacher supplement that varies by county, there's some counties in North Carolina that do not have a teacher supplement, and there's some that might be as high as Wake County, where there's maybe a $10,000 supplement. At the time of the study, Dare County ranked about 30th in the state, and our teachers have not had an increase in about 10 years. And so, part of the work pre-COVID, which we then, coming out of the pandemic when it became endemic, was to engage the commissioners again in making this request. So, about seven weeks ago, we had a five-on-five meeting, five representatives of county government, five from the Board of Education side, myself, Candy Tilly, three board members, and we made a plea to the county commissioners, talking a lot about the cost of living here in Dare County, the impacts on teachers, the fact that they've not had an increase in 10 years. And for the public, we have something that's called a fund balance. It's like your savings account, and we have a local agreement with the county because they give us so much funding, which is typically about $32, $33 million, where if our fund balance, our savings account goes over a million dollars, it goes back to the county. So, and because of the pandemic and because we were out of school and saved a lot of utility costs and other costs last year, combined with $900,000 that I've cut in Central Office in the last 18 months, our savings account went from a million to 3.6. And so, the 2.6 that's over the million dollars by agreement is supposed to go back to the commissioners. So, we took, we brainstormed, and we decided we would advocate for using that additional funding to increase the teacher supplement. And the county commissioners who were at that meeting, and I did about an hour-and-a-half presentation, were very supportive of the concept. So, we've put that into the budget, advocating for our teachers. In Dare County, the average supplement is about $4,800, and it depends upon your years of service and your degree. So, the range is somewhere around $4,100 to $5,200, but again, the average is $4,700, $4,800. So, we're very pleased that the county was willing to entertain that, you know, and some questions that have come forward, well, why don't you ask for more? Well, we wanted to make sure that we were in a position to ask, to have a fair ask and not try to get, ask for too much and then get rejected. So, it's a start, and it would be the first increase for our teachers in 10 years. The other thing that's, so that's part of this build. The other part of this draft budget you'll see is our projected ADM, the number of kids who attend the school system next year, is 5,171 students. This past year was about 5,300. This is a formula that the Department of Public Instruction comes up with that are typically not real numbers. They ballpark them looking at census data in 10 to 15 years of student enrollment. We've not had, Dare County Schools has not had 5,300 kids in probably 15 years. We've averaged about 5,100. So, the actual state dollars are based on that projection of 5,171, and that's what the funding is built off of. And we'll go into more depth of this in the workshop, but what's important about that is the 5,300 meant we were getting more money, and now it's coming down to 5,171. Fortunately, that's just going to mean a difference of about four teachers. However, Dare County Schools has had a really significant low teacher turnover rate for 10 to 12 years, and present day, we've had, as of yesterday, 20 retirements or resignations, and last year, we hired 63 teachers. Now, that was an anomaly because of the 63 teachers, 23 of those were from ESAR funds. So, you saw tonight the interventionists, and we hired, as you know, 23 new teachers last year. So, all that to say, with attrition, we won't have that impact on the four positions. And then what's also very important is that we're still on par with the number of teachers. There's no exodus out of Dare County Schools. There's no mass exit. We're still on par with where we've been for the last 10 years in the number of teachers that we have to hire. So, that's all based in the funding formula. Next steps for the board is going to be to study, formulate your questions, and then the next topic in the items for information is a request to have a workshop. So, the PECAD Committee that meets that goes over the agenda has targeted May 4. If the board is agreeable, to have a workshop at 1:30 p.m., and we can talk about the site and determine that later. At that point in time, we'll have about a two-hour presentation going from A to Z with Candy Tilly, the Finance Director, myself, Ms. Kinsel, to go through all the particulars. So, looking for an agreement on the May 4 date, and then coming out of that, the board will meet again in the May business meeting on the 12th, and we will ask, or the 10th, excuse me, and we will ask the board to approve the budget then, and then it goes to the county. So, by statute, it has to go to the county commissioners by May 15, and then the county commissioners will have a public hearing, and then they target June 6 to vote. So, if they fully support our request in the budget, that will be determined over the next couple of months. So... So we'll, and again, we'll spend two to three hours, however long, in the workshop to go over all the details. So looking for agreement from the board with the May 4th date. Two o'clock, excuse me.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock. Everybody on, Carl, Joe, you okay with it? And I've talked with Maryline, and Frank was going to get back with me, but I didn't know Maryline was available as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Farley?
That's all there is, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. It looks like there is none for the, this agenda item for the board to consider this evening. So we're going to move to the new business. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Kinsel to present policy 4231/5021/7263, which is face covering for the board's monthly review.
Good evening, Chairman Twitty, Vice Chairman Boswell, members of the board, Dr. Farley. This is a monthly review of this particular policy on face coverings as dictated by session law. Throughout this whole year, the board must review this policy to consider any modifications. Last month, it was presented to you. You did make some modifications to it. So we had no restrictions on face coverings. They are completely optional and not required on any of the transportation. So the policy being reviewed this evening, we are recommending no further modifications. We've had pretty low numbers in the school system as far as COVID cases, and don't see a need for modification. So with that, we will ask for your approval.
Is there any questions or comments?
I do have a question. Richard, is anything on the horizon where the legislature is thinking about getting rid of this requirement?
It expires at the end of the 22 school, 2021-22 school year.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
As required by session law, 2021-130, we need to vote on whether or not policy 4231/5021/7263 face covering should be modified. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion not to modify policy 4231-5021 and 7263.
I have a motion on the floor by Carl. Second by Joe. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Six of. Five of, excuse me.
All right, Ms. Kinsel, are you going to present policy manual updates?
Yes, sir. We have a couple of policies and one related regulation for the board to consider this evening. We presented these policies to the policy committee and do recommend that the board consider adopting immediately. Policy 8610 is a pretty old policy on the books. It was last adopted in 1995, I believe. And there's no substantial change to it as the general statute that is related to this policy, related to payroll procedures, is still intact. We did update a little bit of the language in this so that the language regarding vouchers that refers to paychecks could be considered in paper or in electronic format. So we added that language. And we also included a brief statement that in the event that there were funds available to be able to issue bonuses, that the superintendent would work with the Board of Education to be able to make sure that those could be taken care of. So we also wanted to have procedures established, and that's the related regulation that's attached to it. What we're seeing is that the state has issued several rounds of bonuses with the last budget adoption from the state. And there are some very specific guidelines that we have to follow, and others provide bonus funding that allow for us to kind of decide the amount. For example, there is a supplemental fund, I believe it's PRC of 71, that gives us a set amount to be able to distribute as a bonus or a supplement. And that amount may change from one year to the next. So working with Ms. Tilly, we have some procedures and guidelines that we'd like to put into the regulations so that we can implement it with some fidelity from one year to the next. In addition, we also have federal funding that allows for us to be able to provide bonuses to teachers. Again, with auditing of federal programs, even auditing of our local budget, it's always a much better practice to have something in writing so that we can present to the auditors to say, this is how we administered bonuses and/or any supplemental pay. So those policies, we would like to have adopted by the board this evening. The last policy that's being, that we're asking for consideration this, excuse me, consideration this evening is policy 5035. Dr. Farley presented to the policy committee the need for this particular policy to be amended after we've just done some revision to it. But we are in spring season, and lots of outdoor activities in our outdoor facilities, specifically our tennis courts, we're seeing a lot of activity and requests for use of the facilities. Before Mr. Greganis left, he explained that we had put in a lot of maintenance and upgrades to these facilities across the district. And we are not charging for any kind of use when the public requests the use of our tennis courts. So we are recommending a change to this policy. I believe it's in Section E regarding fees and charges by adding a set fee in both of the categories, one which is more of a community group, nonprofit, group category, where they would be charged a recommended $40 to use the facility and a $65 per day fee to be charged to a separate category, which is more of a for-profit organization.
So Dare County has been charging facility use, baseball fields, classrooms, technology, auditoriums, football fields, soccer, you name a facility, and for some reason, tennis courts was never included. And it's actually relatively cheaper than some of the other areas where you actually end up paying for stadium lights. There's 24 access lights on our tennis courts. So the policy committee recommended that we include tennis courts, which would be the first time. But it's consistent with use of every other field space, school space that we've got throughout the school district.
As you know, Ms. Kinsel's request to waive the second reading of the proposed updates to policy 8610 Regulation 8610R and policy 5035, and adopt the updates on the first reading. Do I hear a motion?
I have a question for, reference to 8610 hyphen R, payroll procedures. It's a one-time bonus. Does this policy go away after this year? Is, since it's a one-time award bonus? Or what's the thought here?
Are you talking about the teacher stipend?
Yeah.
So that's not really relative to this. This is another category.
The state awarded bonuses to teachers this year.
I understand it.
And there's a possibility of bonuses being paid out in the future by the state. We wouldn't have anything on the books. It would only be enacted as the monies are received and as it would apply. So the regulation wouldn't necessarily have to go away. It would just be acted upon if and when necessary.
Okay, so if, again, if the state or federal decides to give bonuses, it would be under this policy 8610R?
Yeah, and then the term, I mean, it sounds relative, but bonuses and supplements in the education world are two different categories.
I appreciate the clarification.
Sure.
You good, Joe?
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion to waive the second reading of the proposed updates and adopt the updates on the first reading as requested?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we waive the second reading on policy 8610, 8610R, and 5035, and vote tonight.
I have a motion on the floor for Margaret, a second.
Second.
Second from Susan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five of.
Thank you.
Those in favor waive the second reading of the proposed updates to policy 8610 Regulation 8610R and policy 5035, and to adopt the updates on the first reading as requested. Say aye. I'm sorry, I read that again, didn't I? That's what I get for paying attention to the paperwork, huh? It's all right.
You need a motion to approve the updates.
Do I have a motion on the floor to approve the updates on policy 8610 Regulation 8610R and policy 5035 as presented?
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Margaret.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five of. So next on the agenda will be the Chromebook refresh for grade six and nine. And I'd like to ask Ms. Holly King and Ms. Candy Tilly to come forward to present.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Farley and Ms. Kinsel. This agenda item is a request for the board's approval of a bid secured to support the purchase of Dell Chromebooks using remaining COVID response funds that the district received at the beginning of the pandemic. The scope of this project includes the purchase of 1,000 Chromebooks, 3100s specifically, and 1,000 power supplies to support the rising sixth and ninth graders in all of our Dare County schools. Recognizing the delayed shipment of devices in our current technology market, this project was initiated in March of 2022, so the devices will arrive in time for inventory and deployment in early August of 2022. The district's current refresh procedures provide students in grades six and nine with a Dell Chromebook that is brand-new for their use during their entire three or four years in a specific school, during which time the device is managed on the Dare County Schools' student network under full warranty by the vendor and guaranteed Chromebook updates during that entire time. Many of the devices being used by current seniors will no longer be supported by Chrome after June of 2022. This refresh project will allow us to de-fleet devices while maintaining an adequate inventory of backup computers to serve as loaners. In order to make the purchase of these funds, we released a request for proposal in March of 2022 for technology vendors to bid on providing Dare County schools with these 1,000 devices. Respondent's bid information faced a multi-layered team evaluation based on a rubric that included cost, device specifications, quality, reliability, warranty, and customer service. All submitted documents were considered in making the following recommendation to award the bid submitted by Trafara in the amount of $346,000 for the purchase of 1,000 Chromebook 3100 devices, power supplies, and Google licenses. This amount includes total cost of ownership for the devices during the entire four years of anticipated service. We're pleased to be in a position to present the board with this request for two reasons. First, this will allow the district to make the purchase in time for the devices to be received for full deployment in August. Secondly, we will be able to use a funding source outside of local dollars. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the execution of the purchase of Chromebooks based on the bid process outlined. At this time, we're happy to take any questions.
Do we have any questions from the board?
I just got a quick one, since I'm a tucky guy here. Does it include accidental damage, or is it just a manufacturer warranty?
Accidental damage is included.
Are there agreements between the students or the parents in reference to these Chromebooks in terms of liability, accountability?
Yes, sir. Those are outlined in a board policy that already exists.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. King. Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Is there a motion to approve the Chromebook purchase for grade six and nine as requested?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Chromebook purchase for grade six and nine as requested.
We have a motion on the floor by Carl.
The motion should include the dollar amount and the company that the bid's being awarded to, Trafara LLC.
So moved. So what's the dollar amount?
It's $346,000. The motion should be to approve the award of the bid to Trafara LLC in the amount of $346,000 as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five of.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is board member comments.
I'm good.
Do we have any board member comments tonight?
I just want to wish all the teachers and students and the hard-working staff at Central Office, I hope you all have a very relaxing spring break.
Tammy, thanks for having us. You have a wonderful school. I always enjoy coming into Manio Middle School, and thank you.
Ditto, all of that.
You guys said it all. You were first.
Just as Dr. Farley said earlier, I wish everyone have a wonderful spring break, relax, enjoy your friends and family, and hopefully we'll have some spring weather come our way and enjoy yourself. So with that saying, I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight. And do I have a request, a motion on the floor to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor by Margaret, a second by Joe.
That's yours.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five of.